Much. All right. I'd like to call together, or I'd like to call to order the September 21st, 2022, to board meeting to order and remind everyone to please mute your audio when we're not speaking, as well as state your name prior to making a comment or motion. And second for an action item. Thank you. I'll begin this evening by asking each commissioner to respond with a here when I call out their name. Commissioner Doan.
Here.
Commissioner Duggan.
Here.
And Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
All right, so this evening, we're going to begin with reports from our chief executive officer and management staff. We will hand the baton to Tom.
Thank you, and good evening. So first, our Talking Water, Talking Water Virtual Forum event was held at noon today and featured emergency preparedness. Just a side note to that, these emergency preparedness virtual events are some of our best attended, so these are very popular with our customers. Kevin Sutherland, our emergency program coordinator, and Dave Craska from the Willamette Water Supply Program Director, shared what TVWD is doing to serve water following an emergency and the precautions customers can take in the event of a water service disruption. The other thing I wanted to update you on is the Mission Vision Values and Strategic Planning Project. The current effort right now that we're in in this project is on the visioning and on the Rate Advisory Committee, or RAC for short. The visioning process overview is stakeholder interviews, surveys, project committee meetings, workshops, and we will be holding a special board work session on November 17th to discuss the vision of the board. The whole idea here is to get complete alignment through the organization top to bottom and get all of the mission and the values, all of that in alignment with the vision, and so that we're all rowing the same way to the same objective. The Rate Advisory Committee, approximately five meetings focusing on the district's approach to customer affordability programs and rate design, is going to begin happening here with the first meeting on October 18th, and we are very much looking forward to that. So unless there are any questions for me from the board, I'm going to turn this over to Dave Craska, the WWSP Director, so he can do the department report and the safety this evening.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Good evening, Commissioners. Got a safety minute as Tom explained, and tonight's safety minute is about full driving safety tips. Got seven of them for you tonight. First, a quick reminder to don't brake on wet leaves. They're very slippery. Can be as slippery as ice, so drive slowly through them if you have to drive through them and avoid hard braking. Also, leaves may obscure lanes, lane lines, and other road markers, so pay attention to the edge of the road and take care to stay in your lane. Avoid the sun glare. So at this time of year, the first 15 to 45 minutes after sunrise and before sunset, it aligns the sun itself. It aligns perfectly with east and west roadways, and the sun glare can be a problem. So wear sunglasses, keep your windshield clean, and I don't know how you do this one, but if you can, use north-south streets or streets with tree cover whenever possible. That's okay. Take that advice with a grain of salt, I think. Use your rain smarts. Maintain a safe distance from the car in front of you, as wet roads are more slippery and maybe higher risk of hydrors planning. Again, similarly, use your low beams or fog lights in fog conditions, of course. Number four, be careful on bridges as the temperature begins to drop. Morning frost can leave icy patches on the bridges and overpasses. I'm sure we've all come across that from time to time. Number five, adjust your eyes. We lose one to two minutes of daylight each day after the autumnal equinox. It takes time for your eyes, five to two to five minutes, to start adjusting from indoor lighting to outdoor darkness. So give your eyes time to adjust before dark driving, like after meetings like this. Watch out for deer. Autumn marks the beginning of deer breeding season. They're your most active, of course, during sunset and sunrise, so be extra watchful when driving near the woods and near deer crossings. And then finally, check your vehicle. Tire pressure. Tires lose one to two pounds every 10 degree of temperature drop. Check your windshield wipers and adjust your headlights if they don't seem to be providing the clarity that you need. So that's it for tonight's safety moment. I am going to continue on with the department report. And so tonight's department report is from the Willamette Water Supply Program. I'm going to cover as briefly as possible everything that's going on with the program right now, because we've got a lot to get to tonight, and I don't want to hold people up. So starting off broadly with our recent accomplishments and focus areas, these are kind of all of the other things that are going on in the program. We had a number of procurements that we wrapped up. We submitted a major permit modification for our Tuolatin River blow-off. We've recently helped out with meetings with legislators to discuss potential funding opportunities. We'll hear more about that tonight. Continuing to work on real estate permits and other agreements. We continue to coordinate project delivery with our partners, agencies, and other developers. And there's a lot of planning that we're still doing. Once we finish construction of all the assets, there will be commissioning and startup of all the new assets, the water supply integration or integrating the new supply into the existing distribution systems, and then as of course, planning for ongoing operations when the whole system is operational. As I've been reporting to you over the last number of months, we've completed now all of our major remaining program procurements. So on the left-hand side of this chart are all the remaining projects that we had to head out for bid. All of that bidding has been completed now that we're in September, and we have all of our projects, all of our major projects under construction, or under contract at least. Of those projects that we have under contract, all 14 of them, we have 12 of them in active construction right now. So this chart just quickly shows all of the construction activity that we have all over Washington County, starting all the way down in Wilsonville, down at the Tuolatin, at the, at the Willamette River, continuing all the way up to Sunset Highway. And this chart, as I've presented to you on a monthly basis, shows all of our construction activity. Listed down the left-hand side are all of the various projects that we have on the program. Blue bars going from left to right showing all of the construction progress that we're making on each of these projects. And so now I've got some photos of some of these construction projects to give you an idea of the activity that's been happening over the last month. This is at our raw water facility, what we call our upper site. So this is where we're getting prepared to construct our electrical building, our standby power facilities, and other related improvements. Right now, this construction activity there is the below-grade utilities, such as the sanitary sewer and cleanouts and risers. Also occurring down near the raw water facility is that we completed installing the screens, the new intake screens in the Willamette River, and the protection piles and protection screens around that to protect them from any damage. Near the lower site, we're completing some of the storm drain improvements around the area, so that work is pretty much complete. And now continuing on up north from the raw water facility is our water treatment plant facility. So this aerial photo, kind of in the distance there, is Southwest 124th Avenue. So that gives you an idea kind of where we are in the eastern part of Sherwood. The excavation there in the center of this photo is our Clearwell. So the Clearwell diameter there is on the order of about 250 feet, to give you an idea of the kind of the scale of the of the activity there. That little tiny, looks like a tonka trunk down there, is a really massive earth-moving piece of equipment. So it just kind of give you the scale of our facility that we're working on down there. A little bit different aerial photo there, again, showing 124th Avenue there in the upper right, and the Travel Crow development to the top of this photo just shows some more of our grading, drilling, and blasting activity that's occurring at the water treatment plant site. And then rotating the camera around, now we're looking south, it shows the remaining parts of the water treatment plant site. This shows the rock crushing operations still in activity there, kind of in the foreground on the right-hand side, and all the other grading and pad development activity that's occurring right now. Moving up north from there is our Highway 99 crossing in Sherwood. So this is near the intersection of Highway 99 and Tuolatin Sherwood Road. We completed our tunneling underneath that intersection to get our pipe across it. And this is a photo showing our carrier pipe being installed into the casing underneath Highway 99. Continuing on north from there is on Royal Rogers Road, where we're getting prepared to do the trenchless crossing underneath the Tuolatin River. And so this is on the north side of the Tuolatin River, where our contractor is creating the receiving pit for the trenchless machine or the tunnel boring machine for that particular crossing. This just shows a close-up of more of that activity of creating that C can pile case on that we're developing there for that construction activity. And then on the south side of the Tuolatin River, the contractor is building the access and haul road, and will be soon constructing the sending pit for that trenchless activity. Up north from there, continuing on up north, now we're at the corner of Graborn Road and Stone Creek, is we have our excavation activity for our reservoir site up at the top of Cooper Mountain. And so this shows more of the drilling, blasting, and clearing activity to construct the pad for constructing one of our 15 million gallon reservoirs. This shows some of the activity for creating the retaining wall behind what will be the excavation for our 15 million gallon reservoir. Our pipeline construction, PLM 5.3. So this is in the area south of Rosedale Road, heading towards the Farmington Gardens area. A lot of activity with installing our 66-inch pipeline in that area. You can see the vertical shoring, a lot of the excavator equipment, and the locator tape being installed above our pipeline, so it can be located easily in the future. Up north from there is our PLW 1.3 project, which is just at the very southern end of the Cornelius Pass Road. And so this shows connecting our 66-inch pipeline to a 48-inch pipeline that we installed some years earlier. Moving up north from there, just north of TV Highway along Cornelius Pass Road is one of our partnership projects with Washington County. Washington County is expanding that part of Cornelius Pass Road, so they're doing that work first, moving utilities, building sidewalks, and expanding the roadway so that we can begin our pipeline construction in that area. And this shows the other side of the street where we will be installing, beginning construction for our pipeline. So they've moved the traffic over away from where our construction activity will be occurring. Now looping around over to the other side of Washington County, the eastern side of Washington County, now we're on MPE 1.1 and Western Avenue. This is crossing the Fifth Avenue on Western Avenue. Now, this is, as you know, our partnership project with the city of Beaverton. They're doing all the roadway improvements in that area, and we're installing our 48-inch pipeline in there up to Beaverton Hillsdale Highway, where the Washington County Supply Line is located. A little bit south of there is our MPE 1.2 project. In the, near the Shoals Ferry Highway 217 area, we've completed the construction of our launch shaft to get underneath Fannell Creek in that area. And this shows some of our pipeline construction. If you ever drive around that area, you're sure to run into our construction activity, where we're installing our 48-inch pipeline down Shoals Ferry Road. And this is one more photo of that work, and this is our contractor checking the coating, what we call a holiday test. They're checking the coating is still in good shape before our pipeline is buried. So that was a very quick run-through for the activities occurring on the program at this time. I'd be glad to answer any questions if there are any. I think that was the eight seconds that we usually wait. And so with that, I'll pass it back to you, President Sanders.
Great. Thank you, Dave. If you ever get sick of civil engineering, party planner is in your future, ma'am. I mean, talk about how many balls in the air at the same time. That is amazing. Congratulations to you and your staff. That is...
Thank you. I have a lot of help, yes. So if I go into party planning, I'm not going to do it alone. Let me put it that way.
Take your people with you, because you guys have, you've nailed it. That is quite... I mean, I don't know how many miles between all those projects that is, but that's a lot.
It's spread out all over the place, yeah.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Next up on the agenda this evening is our Commissioner Communications and Reports of Meetings Attended. And we'll see if I know my alphabet correctly, and we'll begin with Commissioner Doan.
Sure. No problem. Okay, meetings attended. There's tonight's meeting. There was the special meeting on September 6th. There were Commissioner interviews on the 31st of August. I attended an earthquake seminar also on the 31st of August, and then we had a teams meeting on the 13th of August. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Doan. Commissioner Duggan?
I started off the month, well, the end of last month, with the special board meeting we had for applicant interviews on the 31st, and also on the 6th. On the 1st of this month, September, we had a regular meeting of the WWS Board, and we just got that fantastic update from our project manager. On the night, I attended the JWC Water Treatment Plant Tour and Barney Reservoir Facility Tour. It was a beautiful day, and we were able to see the Barney Reservoir. For me, is the first time in 15 years. On the 12th, I had the fortune of attending the National American Water Works Association Water Infrastructure Conference held here in Portland at the Portland Hilton, and was able to attend a number of very interesting technical sessions. On the 13th of September, I had a meeting with the CEO for talking about tonight's meeting and planning it. Also on the 13th, I attended the Washington County CPO Number One Meeting, where there was a presentation regarding housing and homeless program for Washington County and their coordination with the larger metro area, plus the recycle, recycle plus program was explained. On the 14th, I attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium Executive Committee, which was our regular meeting in preparation for the October full board meeting of the Regional Water Providers Consortium. Yesterday, I attended a stakeholder interview put on for our Mission Vision and Values Initiative. Today, I attended the Talking Water Emergency Preparedness webinar that staff put on and was very interesting and well-attended, and then tonight's meeting as well. That's it for this last month.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, I attended the two special meetings to interview candidates for our vacant board position. I attended our executive session meeting, and also our board meeting, the last previous board meeting. And that was it for this month for TBWD-related meetings. Unless you want to hear about the Metzger Parks Board and the Tiger Transportation Commission meeting, which technically did have something to do with this, because we heard from some folks about all the construction around Hall and Shoals Ferry.
I'm sure you did. Yeah, we'll save that for another time, if you don't mind. All right, fantastic. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. And then that just leaves me. I have kind of a long list for a couple of reasons. So just starting by date, on the 18th, I met with our HR CEO and legal counsel about finalizing the Commissioner interview questions. And then, per a request from the SDAO, I joined the SDAO Board Leadership Academy. And according to what we've been told, all we have to do is join and not actually do anything, which I found a little wonky. So I decided my goal would be to try to make bronze. And I'm halfway to bronze, so the 22nd, 24th, 25th, and 26th, I watched six or seven training seminars completed, so I'm halfway to bronze. I don't know if I'll go beyond bronze, but I will do more than just sign up. In between there, we finalized the questions for the board interviews, and then we had the special board meeting with the Commissioner interviews on the 31st. I met with CFM a couple of times with Tom, and then I met with Norm Eater as well. We had the sixth special board meeting for the interviews. And then the other part, which has kept me really busy, which is really fortunate that the kids are back in school and I'm not yet, is Ryan Gleason from CFM has been charged with taking care of me as I prepare to meet with legislative members, both people running for election and people who are currently legislators. So working with Ryan on the 7th, and the 8th, and the 9th, we've sent out emails to a number of existing candidates, created or summarized our talking points, finalized some sheet handouts, and all that stuff happened. And then at the end of, what, the week of the 9th, everybody sent me their information with regards to their commissioner preferences. And then I met with each one of our commissioners individually to discuss the details and the outcomes of everybody's final decision-making, and came to a consensus on that, which we will finalize this evening. Then on the 15th, I did the stakeholders' meeting. And then on the 16th, I had the distinct honor of riding along with Andrea Watson and going to meet a customer who had been expressing some discontent over rate hikes, even though they weren't actually, they were concerned about hills burrows when they were in our district. They unfortunately weren't there, but I got the time, got time to spend listening to our communications director, Andrea Watson, and about how she feels about where things are going and how much effort we need to make on communications. And then I met with someone that we will talk to about possibly appointing. This week, I met with our CEO, Tom Hickman, to talk about more about legislative planning. He's going to be going to DC just after Thanksgiving. I unfortunately can't, but Tom will be going to DC and knocking on doors and not, and I was going to make a bad joke there, and we're just not going to make a January 6th comment. Tom will be knocking on doors and talking about our needs and who TVWD is and how important they are to Washington County. And then tonight's meeting. So apologize for the length of that, but there's, we're in the process of trying to build some board interaction with legislators as we begin to transform our identity from being just a reseller of water to a provider of water. Okay, that being said, then, we're up to the next agenda item, which is topics to be raised by commissioners. And I will ask at this time, do any of the commissioners have a topic that they would like to bring up at this time? All right. Not hearing any, we will move on to public comment. And before we move into this, I will say that we also have time set aside this evening for comment regarding rates. This is just a general public comment section, so for anybody listening and hoping to interact with us this evening, this public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. And I'll ask, do we have any persons this evening who would like to comment? Not hearing any at this time, then, we'll move into our agenda item, which is our consent agenda. Our consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items, which do not require discussion. This evening, we have three items, and that is to approve the August 17th, 2022 regular meeting minutes, the August 2022 special meeting minutes, and the September 6th, 2022 special meeting minutes. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Jim Doan, so moved.
Thank you.
This is Jim Duggan, second.
Thank you. So Commissioner Doan has moved, and Commissioner Duggan is second. I'd like to ask our district recorder to provide the roll call vote.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. All right. Thank you, everybody. We'll now move on to item number two, our business agenda, which this evening is a very important issue. This item on our agenda is our water rates issue. And before staff provides information on the proposal and the outcomes of the outreach efforts, I wanted to take a moment to thank you on behalf of the board and TVWD, who provided comments, anyone who provided comments. We received over 136 comments by email, social media, mail, and on the online comment cards. In addition to the written comments, over 1,000 people viewed the rate adjustment information on the website, attended an informational session, or the rate hearings themselves. Thank you for your engagement, your time, and your thoughtful input. What I can say is that the report shows that the vast majority of these comments are about cost. The impacts of the rate increase are real. We know this. I want you to know that all the commissioners on the board have read the comments, and we've heard you speak. We want you to know that we're all in this together, and even though we are in different vessels and experiencing different conditions, we do hear you. So many of the customers stated they were on fixed incomes, and they weren't sure how they could meet an increased cost. And, you know, other customers expressed concerns about the fairness of the rate structure, you know, the need for capital investment, and the timing of all of this, the timing of all these costs. And some customers even asked us, or they asked, and all of our, all of these questions have been answered. Our staff have been asked to respond to all questions. As a result, the Board of Commissioners has directed the staff to form a rate advisory committee, which will begin this fall. The charge of the 17 volunteers is to consider the affordability of the water rates and customer assistance programming. The Rate Advisory Committee is going to make recommendations that we hope will support and help our customers, people we care about deeply. You know, having a reliable, safe source of water, you know, 24/7, 365, no matter what, that is our mission. That is why we're here to serve you. And we'll be delivering this service at a cost of about one and a half cents a gallon. We're proud of that fact, and we take that very seriously as a board and as an organization. So I want to thank all the citizens for their input, for taking the time to participate, for taking the time to share your concerns and your thoughts. And before we move on with this, I'd like to ask, surprise, Tom, surprise... And before we move on with this, I'd like to ask, surprise, Tom, surprise, I'm going to dump it on you to please talk about our water rates agenda item. Oh, then before you start, Tom, I'll just let everybody know who's here. After Tom speaks, Tom and his staff speak, we will then have time for public comment. Tom?
Thank you, President Sanders and Commissioners. This is indeed a very important topic tonight. This is something we don't, we certainly don't take this lightly as staff. And I know the board doesn't take this lightly either. And tonight we are going to go through a summary of the comments we got. The staff's summary response to these comments. And then have a chance for the board to ask questions of us before the board deliberates on the proposed rate increase. So with that, I'm going to jump into, so what's, what's changed? Why are we in this situation? So what we have seen in the past year is what's the primary driver for this increase from what was originally projected is the increased costs on the Willamette Water Supply System. We're going to get into some details about that later on in this presentation, but that is the main driver. And what are we talking about for increases? We think it's important to be transparent and upfront about this. We're talking about the typical bill going up by $8.81 a month, beginning November 1 of 2022. So about a month and a half. We, that's what we're proposing is a 14 and a quarter percent rate increase for the board to consider. What does this do? Well, this is replacing what was currently approved and what had the board had approved prior, which was the nine and a half percent increase. So with that increase would have been $5.83. So what we're talking about is a net difference of a little over $3 a month here, right around $3 a month. So that's what we're talking about tonight. That's what's, that's what is, this is all about. So how did we engage the public? First off, I want to thank our communications director Andrea Watson. Andrea, I cannot say enough of how much outreach effort she did to make sure that we heard from every corner possible. And in these are just some of them that are shown here. We held two open, virtual open houses on August 8th and on August 9th, one in the evening and one at noon. We also held an in-person open house here on a Saturday morning on August 13th. We did a public hearing, the board held a public hearing on August 17th and received public comment in that meeting. And then we also received many written comments through August 25th at 4:00 PM, which is when we closed that record. And then tonight is the board action on this and more deliberation. And we have provided those, those comments to the board. So as staff, with all of those comments, we, we tried our best to distill those comments down to some major topic areas. And this is what we found, that the, that we, what we heard from our community was that considering the increases in cost, is the Willamette Water Supply still the right decision? Many people were expressing concern about the increased costs and, and you know, do, should we continue with that? Another theme that we, we came away with was, are we as TVWD, are we managing costs responsibly? The third one was our, our, all the customers, including corporations, are they paying their fair share? That was a big concern. Is one group paying a disproportionate amount compared to another? And then lastly, and by a huge amount, the largest volume of comments was simply people saying they can't afford the increases and very concerned about what's going to happen to them. What's this mean to them? So tonight, what we are going to do is directly answer these questions. And you're going to hear from Dave Kraska, who's going to talk about the, the first question here and the second. You're going to hear from Paul Matthews, who's going to talk about the third and fourth questions. And then we'll wrap this up. I'll have some closing comments and we'll bring this back to the board. So with that, I would like to turn this over to Dave Kraska. And Dave, you're going to answer this first question for us, which is considering the increases in costs, is the Willamette Water Supply System still the right decision for us? So Dave, can you answer that for us?
I'll do my best, Tom. Thanks for the intro. So yeah, let's get into it. So is it still the right decision? I think to answer that question, it's good to, to look back at how we got to where we are today. And that goes back to, actually frankly, even earlier than 2013. Before we get into 2013 here, this is actually something that the Tuolumne Valley Water District has been working on for frankly, 50 years. Back in the mid 1970s, the Tuolumne Valley Water District bought water rights or acquired water rights to the Willamette River in anticipation that it was going to need a different long-term water supply from the city of Portland. And that was revisited over time. And then again, in 2011 to 2013, where TVWD performed this analysis again and evaluated the four options that are shown in the graphic on the right-hand side. It's a little small on my screen, but I've seen this enough times. I'll just start from the top going clockwise around. The four options were a groundwater supply, a new groundwater supply to the north around the Salvi Island area. The second option was continued purchase or additional purchases from Portland. And down in south there is the Mid Willamette River Supply. And then finally, over on the west-hand side is increased storage from Hag Lake or increasing its capacity or its supply from the Joint Water Commission system. And after that multi-years technical study with public input, the Mid Willamette River was selected in 2013 by TVWD, also by the city of Hillsborough for the reasons indicated here on the left, lower cost, meaning less impact on rates. So of all these options considered, it was going to be the lowest cost to implement and operate. Excellent water quality, as proven by two decades of service and supply to the cities of Wilsonville and Sherwood. It provides ownership of the supply. So long-term, that means more control over the supply and the cost of the supply for TVWD and its customers. It's a reliable supply and fewer environmental impacts. So when evaluating all of the environmental impacts associated with implementing any of these alternatives, the Mid Willamette Supply was identified to have the fewest environmental impacts. So with all of that information, TVWD selected the Mid Willamette Supply and went on course to implementing it. So this is the system that, that entails. So it's the existing intake on the Willamette River that we're expanding, a state-of-the-art water treatment plant in the Sherwood area, more than 30 miles of large diameter pipelines, and water storage tanks on the top of Cooper Mountain. That's the entirety of the Willamette Water Supply System. So to date, over the, since 2015 that the program's been in operations, so over the seven years we've been offering operations, we've accomplished quite a bit. We've received our federal permit for completing all of this work. We've completed all of the planning and design. We've completed seven construction projects, all of those pipelines so far. We've secured WIFIA loans, which are low-interest loans that Paul, the CFO of TVWD will be discussing a little bit later. We, we are currently now, as you heard me earlier tonight, advancing 14 construction projects. And we've continued successful partnerships, not only our partners on the WWSS, which are cities of Hillsborough and Beaverton, but many other partnerships, including extensive partnerships with Washington County. So even with concluding all of that, recent bids brought reality of the current inflationary events to light. If you recall one of my earlier slides tonight, I referenced all of the construction projects that we bid recently. And two of those, two of the larger ones that we bid toward the end of 2021 are indicated in this chart here in the left-hand side. The reservoir and pipeline project, we had an estimated cost of that one of $117 million. And this isn't, these aren't just guest numbers. These are numbers, these estimated costs are done by construction and engineering professionals. And it wasn't until we got the bids in that we realized what's really going on in the construction market right now in terms of cost. So our estimated cost, $117 million in the December 2021 bid, $143 million. Worse was our water treatment plant project, where our estimated cost for that one, $292 million. And the December 2021 bid, $427 million. So all of this is significantly higher than our estimated costs. And at the time, we were still bidding a number of projects, if you remember that chart that I showed earlier tonight. And so we evaluated those remaining, remaining projects to bid and we forecast that the, that the total increase on the program would be about $315 million. That was our forecast at the time and it's landed right around there. So our program budget went from around 1.3 billion to 1.6 billion. So we performed a lot of analysis on this to, to, to really understand what was going on there. First of all, we aren't an anomaly. We found that after checking with utilities across the country, similar or greater cost excursions are being experienced by utilities everywhere, all over the nation. And the drivers for these increased costs include materials inflations, labor shortages and competition, higher fuel costs, and a lot of supply chain disruptions. All of these things leading to the cost impacts that we're experiencing now. So considering that, considering now, this is a $1.6 billion program instead of a $1.3 billion program, it would be fair to evaluate, is it still the best option for TVWD long-term? So we looked into that and that's what's shown on this chart here. On the left-hand side, we list again the alternatives that we considered back in 2013, the northern groundwater supply, the continued purchases from Portland, or the Hag Lake Dam Raise Project. And over the past nine-ish years that have occurred, what's happened with each of those? So on the groundwater supply, there have been no studies, no planning investigations or investments have been made. So basically that project was abandoned, no work has been done on it to date, which means in our opinion, it's fatally flawed. It would certainly not be complete by 2026. Given that no investigations or implementation has been evaluated, it has, it has significant implementation risks. And associated with that as well, significant cost risk, wasn't the low-cost option back then? Wasn't the low environmental impact option back then? It certainly wouldn't be now. Looking at the city of Portland, Portland, since that time, since 2013, has gone about implementing corrosion control and is in the process of designing its own water filtration plant and associated pipeline projects. So with that, again, Portland was not the low-cost option back that, back then. And at this time, they've added significant costs to that. So it'd be a significantly higher cost than it was when we evaluated back in 2013. The current contract with TVWD expires in 2026, so that would be a consideration. It would not provide any ownership of supply to TVWD, so TVW would not provide the, get the benefits of control over its water supply. And it'd also come at a lower level of seismic resiliency. And then finally, the Hag Lake Dam Raise Project. The year of US Bureau, that's a US Bureau of Reclamation project. And at the time, we were partnering with them to evaluate raising the dam to meet the additional supply needs of TVWD and its customers. Since that time, the US Bureau of Reclamation has decided only to improve dam safety and not to increase capacity. And so with that, it would not provide the needed capacity to TVWD and its customers, and it would not be complete by 2026. So again, we believe that one as well as fatally flawed. So with all of that, there have been some other, other comments made about stopping or delaying the WWSP to manage these costs. And if that decision were to be made, you need to understand the risks and costs associated with either of those options. So if we consider first stopping the WWSP, you need to consider that TVWD and its partners would not receive any return on the more than $450 million already invested. Now that's invoices paid, that doesn't include work in progress. So currently stopping the 14 active construction projects would take about a year to wind down. And in, in the intervening time and associated costs with that, TVW and its partners would incur about another $300 to $400 million in order to wind down and close the WWSP. TVWD and its customers would, would then incur the costs of Portland's new water treatment plant, as I mentioned in my previous slide. TVWD and its partners would incur the cost of maintaining all the various stranded assets, meaning the pipelines that are partially developed sites and partially completed facilities around Washington County. Again, these would be stranded assets, but would need to be maintained and kept up until such time as TVWD and its partners decided to move forward with the, the project. And then finally, need to consider that, again, this is a partner project. So this isn't a decision that TVW can make by itself. The WWSS intergovernmental agreement requires concurrence from at least the city of Hillsborough, but probably also the city of Beaverton as well. Other consideration is what about delaying the WWSP, to delay the schedule to spread the costs out over time? If that were to be implemented, you need to understand, or TVW would need to consider, that it would expose the TVW customers to continued escalation and overhead, and it would require extending the contract with Portland again at its higher rates. So just felt necessary to kind of lay that out if the, those things were to be considered. So I guess in conclusion, on the previous slide, we still strongly believe that yes, the WWSS is still the long-term, the best long-term water supply for TVWD and its customers. So moving forward from that, are we managing costs responsibly? So on the program, what we call the program, the Willamette Water Supply Program, that's what WWSP stands for. And just to be clear, the WWSP, the program is what is getting the WWSS, the Willamette Water Supply System built. In the program, in our efforts to complete the WWSS, there are six different ways that we go about managing and controlling costs. A first that we've been implementing since day one is maximizing competition. Wherever possible, we want as much bidding competition on all of our work and all of our services to again, drive the cost down as much as possible. And once we have a selected contractor or selected consultant or selected a supplier, we negotiate the best price and quality for the services and goods that we're going to receive on the WWSS. We make cost-effective engineering decisions. Though design is complete, there's still a lot of engineering that takes place during construction. And we're every day are, you meant, you saw from the slides I presented earlier, the, the currently 12 going to be 14 different construction projects happening. We have engineers and experienced construction managers and inspectors everywhere, making sure that we're making good, cost-effective decisions to keep us on track and make sure the quality remains high. We also have a robust risk management system that we implement on the program to anticipate risks and manage them so they're not realized and so we don't incur those costs. Partnering on all of the projects has been paramount and it's been a hallmark of everything that we've done on the program wherever we possibly can. Wherever we can share costs and combine projects, we do so. And finally, rigorously manage all aspects of the project, program to stay on schedule. There's no surer way to go out of budget than if you go off schedule. And so everything that we can do to maintain schedule, stay on track, to finish on time is going to be our best bet to finish within as, as low a budget as possible. In addition, you heard, I think below both President Sanders and Tom Hickman talk about efforts that we're applying to pursue federal and state assistance. And that is a significant effort right now at this time for TVWD and us in the program that are supporting that. It's starting to bear fruit and we're going to keep working, keep working on it, redoubling our efforts. To date, 1 million has been received for the treatment plant and 2021 appropriations. And an additional 3 million was included by Representative Bonamici and House Appropriations. In addition to those, $20 million has been requested by Senators Wyden and Mergley and Senate Appropriations. And $75 million is being requested from state infrastructure funding. And so all of these efforts are everything that we can do in order to try to, try to manage costs and reduce the impact on rate pairs. And we're going to keep doing this. So with that, I'll pass the presentation on to Chief Financial Officer Paul Matthews, who will talk more about what's going on at TVWD in particular. Paul?
Thank you, Dave. In managing cost, you heard what Dave is doing with the program. The district also has a major focus on cost management. I want to show just a few examples of what we've done here at the district to manage our cost. The first thing I want to talk about is what we've done with our personnel services budget. The first thing I want to talk about is what we've done with our personnel services budget. Our personnel services budget is all the, all the expense that we have associated with employees. Their wages, their benefits, the entire cost of having an employee. Since the last biennium budget, so between the 1921 biennium and the 2123 biennium budget, we reduced our personnel services budget despite inflation. We've reduced it by 2.8%. And we're staying on budget or below budget on our personnel services. That was done by managing our personnel services very effectively. And we've got another example a little bit later where I'll talk about special efforts we've had in that area. We've also deferred projects. We've had to look very hard at our capital improvement plan and make sure that every project was right there on the importance and defer as many projects later into our construction period as possible. By delaying projects, it allows us to reduce our immediate need for borrowing and allows us to keep our rates lower. The third thing I want to talk about is the partnerships that we have with other utilities. We use that to lower our costs and to share those costs with our partners. Just one example is the partnership that we have with Clean Water Services, where we jointly bill for Clean Water Services customers, the sewer and the water bill. So many of our customers get a bill from us that has both the water and sewer on there. Tonight, we're only talking about the water portion of that bill. But as a cost-saving measure, we do bill on behalf of the sewer utility, Clean Water Services as well. And that saves both agencies money on, on that billing process. So those are just a few examples. I want to put our current situation in context. We're looking for about $200 million of additional money to fund our portion, our share of the infrastructure investment in the Willamette Water Supply System. Using current financing assumptions, that would increase our debts, our debt service by about $12 million per year. Now, interest rates are going to determine that ultimately, but for this example, I want to show that it is about $12 million per year. What you see on this chart, the red dashed line, is that $12 million per year. The blue bars represent different parts of TVWD's cost structure. The first blue bar that you see there is our material and services cost, our budget. That includes all the purchased water that we have, all the expenses for fuel, all the expenses for operating the water district other than personnel services. Over the biennium, we averaged about $25.8 million. So this 12 and a half, this $12 million increase in debt service is almost half of our material and services budget. On the personnel service side, you can see we averaged about $21.2 million. That pays for all the meter reading that we do, pays for all the, all the staff that bill our capital projects, that maintain our system and run the operations. Again, the 12 million is more than half of our personnel services budget. And the last bucket I show there is our in-district CIP. This is our capital improvement program that excludes the work that the water supply program is doing for the district. So this is all the investments that we make in local pipes, our reservoirs, our pump stations, about $28 million. Now, I'm not showing this to indicate anything other than the $12 million is a significant amount of money. We've been managing our cost as closely as possible, but this isn't something, the 12 million that we can make up just purely by cuts. But in terms of managing costs, I want to show just a couple other examples where we've, where we've pressed real hard to manage costs. The first one is our healthcare costs. The district purchases a high deductible insurance plan for, for our employees from a national insurance carrier. We're self-insured for a portion of that deductible. And the district has a wellness plan that provides all of our employees an incentive to use their healthcare spending very wisely. And through that process, over the last four years, we've managed to see on average, our healthcare cost decreased, not an increase, but decreased by 1.9%. So our actual healthcare cost per employee is going down 1.9% over the last four years because of this approach. That's real savings for the district and our customers. The other example I want to talk about is a little different, it's, it's on a revenue side. Dave Kraska talked about our WIFI loan, that's the Water Infrastructure Finance and Invasion Act loan. It's a low-interest loan that we have from EPA. The interest rate on that loan is 1.35%. Back in June, we took $104 million distribution of that money. We're able to reinvest that in very secure US Treasury notes, bills and, and bonds. And we're estimating that we're going to earn about $5 million just on the difference in that interest rate of what we're able to invest versus what we're paying the Treasury. So that's again, a, a way of saving our, our customers, $5 million to offset some of these other expenses that we have in our program. So cost management has been very important to the district, not only at the program, but everything that we do here as well, trying to manage those costs effectively. The drivers to our rates, we talked and Dave Kraska talked about the construction of the additional water supply. That's obviously one of them, but the rest of our operations are also affected by inflation. And our financial plan supports funding those things. And I think it's important for us to highlight what some of those rate drivers are. So in addition to the capital project, we also spend great dollars on maintaining and operating the water system. That's all of the preventative maintenance as well as the repair and replacement that we do in the water system. It's important to note that the district replies entirely, relies entirely on water rates to fund its operations. We receive no property taxes or any other taxes to fund the operations of the water district. And then the last major driver is purchased water, which is the, the cost of buying water from the city of Portland, as well as the water that we purchased from our partners at the Joint Water Commission. When we talk about the capital projects, the near-term infrastructure investment is, is really a key to our financial needs. What's presented here is our capital improvements. The blue area that you see there is the infrastructure for the Willamette Water Supply System that is being delivered to us by the Willamette Water Supply Program. So that's that blue area. The dark gray area that you see in this slide is the spending by year for our in-district CIP. In the 22 to 24-year period in that in-district CIP, we have a, a major pipeline project that is part of our Willamette effort that is being provided by the Willamette Water Supply System called the Metzger Pipeline East. So that's, that's part of that big spend. As you can see, we're having a huge generational investment right now to complete the Willamette project. We've been watching this come at us over the years as we got closer and closer to the completion of the project in 2026. And right now, we're anticipating spending over a million dollars a day on this capital infrastructure investment. We've developed a financing plan to minimize the impact on rate customers by using long-term debt responsibly. I mentioned earlier, our WIFI loan, that's that low-interest loan at 1.35%. You can see that we're going to be taking that money in '23, '24. And then we need to get approximately $200 million of additional borrowing through either traditional revenue bonds or through a second or third WIFI loan. And we're working on those details right now. That'll provide us adequate capital, adequate cash to pay for the capital improvements, but obviously that has an impact on rates. So one of the questions that we received or a series of questions is, are all customers, including corporations, paying their fair share? I want to take just a moment to address those questions. First, I want to present some, some facts. About 95% of TVWD's customers are single-family or multifamily residential customers. About 2% of them are commercial customers, 3% are others. These include irrigation customer, fireline customers and a few wholesale meters. You look there at the industrial customers, we say zero. Well, it's actually four, four one-hundredths of a percent. We have 24 out of our 60, 61,000 customers are industrial customers. So that's the makeup of our customers. When we look on a revenue basis, our single-family residential customers provide about 71% of our, our revenue. The rest of the revenue comes from these other major customer classes. So they are in fact paying their, their fair share. I want to show just a hypothetical example for an industrial customer of what their bill might be. So if we have an industrial customer with an eight-inch meter, you can see here that on a monthly basis, using the rates from November of 2021, their, their bill would be about $175,000. After the rate increase, their bill will be about $200,000. So it's about a $25,000 increase in their bill. And all this is following our current rate proposal. When it comes to setting water rates, the district uses cost to service as a basis for setting water rates. There's technical jargon associated with cost service, I don't want to get into too many of the details, and that's not the goal of this slide. But I just want to let you know what our guiding principles are. First of all, we follow industry standard approaches to ensure customers pay rates that are proportioned to the cost imposed on the system. So there are industry standards out there that are available to us. The district has used those industry standards for decades to make sure that customers pay a fair amount, portion of the cost they put on the system. By following those guiding principles of cost to service, this avoids subsidies among customer classes. So we don't have, for example, residential customers subsidizing industrial customers or industrial customers subsidizing residential customers. The last item on this list I want to talk about are assist development charges that we have that ensure that new customers, that is growth, pays for itself. So growth from customers is an important revenue source for us. If a new customer hooks up to our system, they pay what's called a system development charge or an SDC, currently set at $8,795 for a single-family home. Commercial customer can pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for a comparable amount of infrastructure. Again, this is all based on the cost of the infrastructure to ensure that our existing customers are not subsidizing growth. So I think it's fair to say that we are in fact making sure everybody pays their fair share. We also got comments, and these are the hardest ones for us to, to grapple with. And that is simply, I can't afford these increases. What's going to happen to me? We have an increasing number of customers that are going to find it difficult to pay their bill. Affordability is not just a TVWD issue. Affordability for water is in fact a national concern, but it is a local priority. And our board has in fact provided us, you heard earlier from President Sanders, direction to engage a rate advisory committee to deal with those things. But we know that as the cost of water increases, which it will to fund this necessary investment in, in the Willamette to cover the other costs of the district, water will become unaffordable for an increasing number of, of customers. So we see that as a growing concern over time, that it's going to be more customers caught up, more vulnerable customers caught up in the inability to pay for their water. The solutions here are, are value-based. There's no technical solution that we can turn to our technical experts and say, can you give us the solution to this affordability problem? And that's where the rate advisory committee comes in, and that's the direction we got from the board. So we have 17 volunteers from the community, they're going to be looking at how we can help those that can't afford water, what kind of low-income rates can be in place or other programs that will help customers that cannot afford their water bill. We're going to continue to move in that direction. This rate advisory committee is a follow-on. We were proactive in assembling a rate advisory committee back in 2016, '17. We've implemented many of their recommendations. And now we've reconvened the rate advisory committee to further those, to further the efforts to help with affordability and to renew our commitment with customer comments. So I need to cover what our proposed rate adjustments are. The district has both a fixed monthly charge and a volume charge. I've presented these in prior months and at all the open houses. These are the rates that we are proposing, increasing the fixed charges vary by meter size. They recover the cost of, the district of maintaining the meter, includes the cost of reading the meter, issuing bills. It also includes some of the costs associated with maintaining the public fire protection system, which customers need regardless of the amount of water that they use. We present these as monthly bills. Most of our customers are charged on a bimonthly basis, but to make it more comparable to their other utility bills, we present this on a monthly basis. So the fixed monthly cost will go up. Most of our customers, about 90% of our customers are that 5/8 inch meter. We also have a block rate structure, and this is part of the district's cost-to-service methodology. Following those guidelines, we have a block one rate, which will be going up from 615 to 703 per 100 cubic feet, which is about 748 gallons of water. That's how the water meters measure water, it's in terms of cubic feet of water. And the block two rate will go up from 877 to 1002. The reason for these higher rates, the block two rate, is to capture the increased cost to provide water during that peak period. For residential customers, the first 28 CCF over a two-month period or the first 14 CCF on a monthly basis is included in that block one rate. Anything above that 28 CCF in two-month period or 14 in a one-month period, that is charged at the block two rate. For commercial customers, it's actually 140% of their annual 12-month moving average of water use. Anything above that 140% is priced at that higher block two rate. I gave you an earlier example for a hypothetical industrial customer. Now I'm going to give you examples for our residential customers. Our typical single-family residential customer does have a 5/8 inch meter. They consume 7 CCF of water per month. That's about 5,200 gallons of water, about 22 tons of water that we deliver. That, that bill will go up by $8.81 on a monthly basis. Again, these are presented on a monthly basis rather than a bimonthly basis. 7 CCF is that typical customer, the most common bill that we issue. Some customers use more than that and above-average customer consuming 12 CCF, which is about 9,000 gallons of, of water, or more than 37 tons of water, will see that bill go up by $13.21. And the last example that I'm going to provide here tonight is for a very high-use customer, single-family residential customer that has 28 CCF per month, that's 56 CCF over a two-month period. Their bill would go up by about $32.47. That's almost 21,000 gallons of water per month, or over 87 tons of water per month that we deliver for that, for that increase. With that, I'm going to turn back over to Mr. Hickman to close us out. Tom?
Thank you, Paul. And what I want to do now is just recap a bit here. So I, I realize, I, I hope everybody was able to, to pay attention and, and understand everything we just presented. But I thought it was important that I recap. So these were the questions we started with tonight, that we said, this is what we heard from our customers. You heard from Dave Kraska, our Willamette Water Supply Director, about the, the decisions that were involved in going to the Willamette and that the costs would actually be higher for us to leave that decision and that the premise of that decision is still valid today. We, that, that hasn't changed. So we believe that it was the right decision, remains the right decision. And this is something we need to now see through to the end. As the board remembers vividly, when we were passing this budget more than a year ago, we, we as staff were talking about the financial event horizon. The, the fact that once we got to this point in the project, we simply weren't going to be able to, to back away or back out. And, and that is, that is the situation with the Willamette. The other thing that we addressed was, and the question that, that we heard was about managing costs responsibly. You heard from both Dave Kraska and Paul Matthews of what we have done to manage our costs. We were proactive in that effort. We worked with our partners in that effort to get our costs down. And we remain very proactive in trying to find effective and efficient ways to manage our costs, scrutinize our expenditures, and at the same time, keep the basics of the system functioning. And then you heard that from Paul about, are all the customers, are they paying their fair share? And I think Paul demonstrated that they are. That in fact, the corporations are actually paying a significant part of our revenue. So we, we are, we are collecting our revenue in a way that is equal to the, to the usage and demand that people put upon it, as well as corporations. And then lastly, you heard from Paul Matthews about, you know, the, the concern over costs and not being able to afford them. And the fact that the board has directed us as staff to, to form a rate advisory committee, which we have done, and that we are going to be and that we are going to be moving forward on looking at this issue of affordability. We have some of the best experts in the nation, if not the world, to that are involved in this project, to help guide us on this project. So I think we are taking very aggressive actions to try to tackle this affordability issue, and we'll be bringing information back to the board in the future. So with that, I'd like to turn this back over to the board for your discussion deliberation. We as staff were certainly here, available to answer questions, concerns through your deliberation.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Dave, and thank you, Paul. So we're going to have two parts here. This will be the to the board. We'll be considering adopting Resolution thirteen dash twenty-two, a resolution establishing water rates for the Tuolton Valley Water District that was listed in Exhibit A of the resolution with an effective date of November first, two thousand and twenty-two. However, before we send this to the board, I'd like to open this up to the public. And at this point, I'd like to ask, is there anyone who wishes to comment on this agenda item? Just as a reminder, each person is limited to five minutes unless an extension is granted. And then if three or more people testify, each person will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to speak this evening? Not hearing any names come forward then, I'm going to move to the board and say, do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution thirteen dash twenty-two, a resolution establishing water rates for the Tuolton Valley Water District as listed in Exhibit A of the resolution with an effective date of November first, two thousand and twenty-two?
This is Commissioner Duggan.
So moved.
This is Commissioner Duggan. I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Dohm moved, and Commissioner Duggan second. Can I have the district recorder please provide a roll call vote?
Commissioner Dohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. All right, the motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, everybody, for your presentations this evening. We have one final agenda item before we close the evening, and that is to consider to make an appointment to fill the vacancy of Board position number one. As you all know, Commissioner Bagnell and Commissioner Schmidt are no longer on the board for various reasons. We did have a series of interviews over the last month, and we would like to reach out and perhaps make an appointment to one of those applicants today. This would be Elliot Lysick, who is here with us at the time today. We felt, I felt, I won't speak on behalf of everybody, that Mr. Lysick brought to the board some of the things that we could always use. First of all, some finance background and also some knowledge with rate structures and working with people from overburdened communities, financially overburdened communities. So that was one reason that I felt he was a good choice. I'd ask any of the other commissioners if they would also like to make a statement or comment on why we would consider Mr. Lysick at this time. Sorry to put you on the spot.
This is this is Jim Dohm. He, I think embodies the skills that we need to deal with these unprecedented rate increases. And going forward, you know, how do we prevent being surprised in the future? I think there's a blend here, a unique blend of skills that I think the district will find very helpful, and I wholeheartedly endorse him.
Thank you, Commissioner Dohm.
As is Commissioner Duggan. I'd like to echo those comments. I was impressed with his interview and and in particular, the the set of skills and attributes that that he brings. And it, we have a big set of shoes to fill in in losing Commissioner Bagnell, and he does does the best to to replace those skills that that we lost when Commissioner Bagnell resigned.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan.
This is Carl Fisher. And I just wanted to say that I, on top of everything else that's been said, I I was very pleased to see that we will see a diversity of of different types of families represented here on the board, whether it's a multifamily household, whether it's empty nesters, and then a family with very young children. I think that's a good perspective to keep in mind when we're dealing with our our constituents is that some of the the littlest people need their voice heard too in these meetings.
Well, that's an excellent point, Commissioner Fisher. Thank you. And so then I have asked Mr. Lysick if he would be interested, and he said that he has. So at this point, I'd like to bring forth a motion to appoint Elliot Lysick to the Board of Commissioners. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
This is Jim Dohm. So moved.
Commissioner Fisher seconded.
Great, thank you. Can I have a roll call vote, please, district recorder?
Commissioner Dohm?
Yes, enthusiastic, yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. Wonderful. The motion passes. Mr. Lysick, Elliot, I see you've turned your camera on. Congratulations. We're excited to have you join. Would you like to say hello? Oop, still no volume. Looks like we got some digital gremlins there, Elliot. We're glad to see you. Welcome. I will say Debbie Carper, our district recorder, the person who's been in in contact with you, she will be reaching out to schedule in your swearing, and swearing in here online is just not appropriate. So Debbie will set that up in the future, and we look forward to having you join us probably at our next work session in the month of October. Welcome, and again, thank you for your willingness to serve the community. We're very grateful to have you on board. Yes, congratulations. All right. That being said, a long evening this tonight. That being no further business before the Board of Commissioners, I will adjourn the meeting. The meeting is adjourned.